Okay, good evening. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I make an addition to the agenda to add a discussion of committee assignments at the end of the meeting?
Yes, if there is no objection. I'm looking to where to put it.
After 10 or after 9 or after?
Under 6, discussion items.
There you go.
Public comment?
De Rubina Lee, I'll be brief because I'm hoping we'll see some of the presidential debate. But I did hear on the radio coming in here on NPR, a report that focused on Oyster River Middle School and technology in Oyster River Middle School that I thought presented the school in a very positive light and I think went out nationally. It was NPR, not NHPR. And so, congratulations to them.
Go ahead, thank you.
Hello, Denise Day Durham, and I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to a very thoughtful budget process. I feel like things are off on a good start in terms of, you know, it sounds like it's laid out in a way to allow plenty of times for discussion about the budget and hopefully we'll avoid the 11th hour kinds of changes that were made last year that resulted in a lot of confusion and, you know, difficulty. In particular, I want to say that I'm very wary of the level funded budget because I think it's important to look at what is important to our district first. And while I certainly appreciate the need to contain costs, I think it's extremely important that we want to maintain the level of, of just the value that we do have. And so, to really be thoughtful about that before simply settling on a number that says, yeah, we want the budget to be X dollars. I think it's important to really look at what we value in the district and what we want to keep here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Then we go on to superintendent's actions.
I have none, Madam Chair. You're going to get to board actions, right?
You have no comments?
I have them under my superintendent report.
Oh, okay.
Plenty of comments, just not right there.
Okay. Our board action, move to approve policies. And again, we'll take them one by one for the second reading, BDE. We took it back, we looked at it again, and especially took out the list of committees because you never know what might come up and some of them we didn't have. So, it's before you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept BDE as presented.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Megan. Discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the first paragraph, the word desirable is ambiguous and I would like us to admit it if possible.
What line are you on?
The second to the first sentence, second line.
I still can't find it.
Second one.
Oh, yeah. Is that?
It's a subjective word. It's desirable to me, is not necessarily desirable to you.
Don't need it.
And we don't need it. Is that an amendment, the motion?
Yes.
Anything else? Good, we have a show of hands on the amendment. Then we're back to the main motion as amended. All those in favor? Seven in the affirmative, the student representative in the affirmative, motion passes. Then we'll go to BDF. What's up? Advisory Committees to the Board, not much change, just the clarification that the Board means the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. And that we also have a relationship with the public. Those are the only changes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept BDF as presented.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Megan. Discussion? Megan?
I just, there was another change that you didn't, you might want to mention at the bottom. There's a reference, now I lost the page, to RSA 91A. So, just to make note of that, that was added in.
Yes, it was. Any further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, the student representative in the affirmative, motion passes. BDB, Board Officers in Board Organizational Meeting. Again, we clarified it's Oyster River we're talking about. We took out the secretary since she's not really a board officer and it comes up later.
The R is there for the board review, Madam Chair. They don't need to take action on the R.
Right, but the Rs are attached. And it's cross-reference with the Rs. And RSA 91A dash 2.
Motion to approve policy, BDB, Board Officers in Board Organization Meeting.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Megan. Discussion?
That first line, we crossed off officers. It says the school board members of Oyster River Cooperative School Board shall be a chairperson, a vice chairperson. Shouldn't it be like the school board officers of the Oyster River? I'd like to make an amendment to cross off members and add officers.
So amended. School board members become school board officers. With the second?
Yes.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, could we have show of hands, seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion carries. Now we're back to the motion as amended. All those in favor? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion carries. And if I can find the page.
BDD.
We'll go right on to BDD, Board Superintendent Relationship. And we clarified superintendent's executive powers. We clarified we're talking about Oyster River. And we added the last sentence, that when the school board is not in session and in the absence of policies, which means some kind of emergency, the superintendent will make their decision on law and best judgment. Krista?
Well, first, I'll make a motion, actually knowing what, because I think that it should say the superintendent and/or his or her designees, because in, if there's an emergency and the superintendent is not available, it would be his or her designee.
Good point.
So, I make a motion to approve policy, BDD, changing the last line to read, when the school board is not in session and in the absence of policies, the superintendent or his or her designees will make decisions based on law and best judgment.
Second?
And that's seconded, moved by Krista, seconded by Ann. Discussion? Ann?
The first sentence actually didn't, also didn't come out quite as expected. Policymaking is a primary function of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board and the executive, execution of those policies is the primary function of the superintendent. So, the and, the and should come back.
Or put in a semicolon.
Yeah, you have semicolon. Does the maker of the motion agree to that change?
You can make it two sentences.
You could do that as well.
Do we have an English teacher here?
And you're the secondary, you agree to that?
Yes.
So, there's the main motion.
Tried to do it without amending, sorry.
You didn't, you agreed to the change.
Yeah, fine.
So, any further discussion?
So, is that another motion?
No.
The amendment, no?
No. She agreed to the change.
Okay. Do we need to change the wording in the motion?
So...
No. So, is it, is it two sentences? Is it a semicolon or is it an and?
You can choose.
I can choose? I'm going with John, two sentences, please.
Actually, now, what is those referring to?
With the two sentences, designee, and and, we're now ready to vote?
Yeah.
Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion passes. BDG, the school attorney. We tightened it up a little bit to make sure who gets to call.
I make a motion to approve policy, BDG, school attorney.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Megan. Discussion? Ann?
Not that I disagree, but I just have a question about why you took out that last paragraph about a board member may ask for legal counsel. So, I can see why the board can, but maybe a single board member doesn't need to or maybe it's a problem.
We're trying to save money here.
That's another reason.
Madam Chair, it is addressed in the first paragraph because I had the same concern. It does say, the board may authorize a specific member to confer with legal counsel on its behalf. I don't disagree with you because we have had instances, especially when it comes to a conflict of interest and whether or not the conflict of interest is present, where a board member would contact the attorney for that, however...
Of the board member's conflict of interest?
Yeah.
I think that should go through the superintendent. Do I have a conflict of interest?
Right, okay.
I just would like to, I agree with Maria. A board member does not have the authority to contact an attorney for advice, only in a situation where there is already, I don't know the terminology, we talked about it in our policy meeting, but there's already a dialogue set up and the attorney needs to talk to you for some reason. I don't know how to articulate that appropriately, but could you help?
So, this conversation we had is going back to the concept that the board only acts as a body and therefore, an individual board member contacting the school's attorney would be inappropriate without authorization from this body.
I understand.
So, trying to keep the chain of command appropriate, so we don't have seven people calling seven different attorneys, trying to get seven different opinions. So, it's really just to make sure that we're adhering to our statutory obligation to act as a unit.
Hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion carries. Organizational meeting, is that for first reading?
No, we're deleting BDA. We're deleting.
We're deleting.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. BDA to be deleted because we have that other...
Motion to delete policy, BDA, organizational meetings due time, please.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Megan. Discussion, hearing none, could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion carries.
I just have a point of clarification. Jim, do we need to vote on or take action on the emergency appointment to replace Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Madam Chair, permission to revert back to board actions momentarily?
I skipped something?
No, it's not on the agenda, but it was an emergency appointment.
Oh, yeah. But we haven't, have we done policy BDG?
No, but it's not on the agenda, so the modification to the agenda, add a board action item.
Okay.
To approve the emergency appointment for Mike Troy at the high school.
Right, got you, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we add that?
You can add it at the bottom, I guess. After motion to adopt policy committee goals. Are we putting it at the end of this particular section?
It shouldn't be under emergency.
It's a board action, right?
Motion to adopt policy goals.
Okay.
Okay, motion to adopt communications committee goals.
We have come up with four goals and I hope they don't sound too jargony. The first would be a motion to allow the communication committee to investigate proposed changes to the organizational communication structure to improve flow of information to communities.
I would read all four of them.
You want me to do all four?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the second is to propose changes to the district website to provide information in a timely and user-friendly manner. The third is to facilitate distribution of administrative budget information to the public. And the fourth is to allow board presence on OR TV to help improve board communication to the public.
And you may make a motion.
I make a motion to add those four.
Second.
We have four, it's four goals. Krista?
I would like to propose change to the language on bullet number four.
Okay.
Only that, my only concern about that is that the person who is representing the board can only represent public information that's been discussed at a meeting because we can't do anything else.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, maybe modify it and Tom, you can tell me if this isn't right. But allow board presence on OR TV to help improve board communications to the public discussed at meetings or, I don't know, somebody else.
That's in the public domain.
That's in the public domain? That sounds great.
Does that work, Tom? That's in the public domain?
Let's say it again.
Allow board presence on OR TV to help improve board communication to the public that's in public domain?
No.
Information.
To clarify information that's in the public domain?
Perhaps like regarding information that's in the public domain?
I like regarding.
Megan was first, but then I'll...
I have a couple issues. On this, this last bullet, I think allowing is fine. I think though, that an individual board member can only go and represent the board once charged by the board for a specific reason to do so. You know, so for example, say we're, I don't know, we get more information about Newmarket and we, and we think it's appropriate that, you know, someone from the communications committee goes and goes on, we actually charge the committee of that specific task. I don't, I just don't think have, it should be specific and charged by the board because the individual is being a spokesperson for the board. So, that's, that's one thing. I think it has to say allow board presence on OR TV or whatever, the TV, OR TV to help improve board communication to the public.
As charged.
As charged by the board. I think the fact that you can't talk about anything that was not public is implicit in everything we do anyways. So, I don't think you need to call that out. That's my opinion. And then the other piece is facilitate, the third bullet, facilitate distribution of administration budget information to the public. I think this is, I'd like to see what the board feels about, you know, we have, we go into that budget presentation later next, or early next year and I think in the past we've had board members present different pieces of the budget. Perhaps the communications committee should be charged with, with doing that presentation. I don't know if that's something, because that is in fact, one of the more, and then any materials we have at the voting booth about the budget, I don't know if that, they would be responsible for the creation of that material. Just a suggestion. I don't know if that's...
I think it's, my thought was that the communication committee would just whip the superintendent harder to produce appropriate information to, that can be distributed by email or the website or PTO or pieces of paper.
Bullet number four.
And we would help him distribute.
I would like to see bullet number four modified. I will allow, allow, but I think it needs to be modified with allow approved board presence.
As charged, that's what I said. That's what I said.
But did you say approved?
Well, you're charged.
By the board.
That means you're approved.
It's more than approved.
It's like...
Now, it reads allow board presence on OR TV to help improve board communication to the public as charged by the board.
Okay.
So, that's charging the allowance. Krista?
My only concern about the communications committee being charged with doing the entire deliberative session presentation is that it's a lot of work.
It doesn't say that in here.
No, I know, but I'm just responding to, yeah.
You still have to do the posters.
You have to have fun and go on TV, then you have to do posters.
Yeah, there you go. It's a lot of work, so.
Yeah.
Especially if you have, like, if we're, if we decide, and I don't know what we're going to do, but if we decide to have a separate CIP presentation and then a budget presentation and then, it's just a lot of work for, to do. So, I think if we keep it like this, we can decide when we get there.
Who does that part?
Who, who would do it.
And I think in this too, we were kind of, I mean, that big chunk that we're throwing out there with facilitating had to do with like things like the forums and that, so it's just kind of a broad category we threw out there.
Do we need a motion to approve these goals?
That's...
You made the motion?
It's been moved.
Do you have to amend it?
I'm lost in the amendments.
I think we're at allow board presence on OR TV to help improve board communication to the public as charged by the board.
And that was amendment made by Megan?
Yeah. May I just, there's a, at the first bullet, there's a closed parentheses dangling out there, just get that off, just so it looks clean, that's all.
The amendment was offered by Megan, seconded by...
I just wanted another discussion.
Seconded by...
A second.
Krista?
Ed has a comment.
Yeah, but somebody has to get through it to...
Oh, I guess my comment was back to the budget information and being charged, you know. I'm not sure how that actually happens when the TV comes and you go on TV and like you're going to be talking or maybe you already have talked about the budget with the OR TV. I mean, how does that, you know, are we, have we already charged you to do that or, you know, or how is that, how's that communicate? Because they're going to come to you, you're going to be on their, kind of their schedule, not our schedule.
Yeah, okay, first of all, with the OR TV, it's more, it's not, it's more broad, so you have to think of it as like from the student perspective. So, with this, the budgetary information that they want to know is just like, how does this whole thing work? Like what's the start, what's the middle, what's a deliberative session, what's the vote? It's not like, you know, let's talk about line 24 of the budget. It's not that kind of detail. It's much more broad. And I think, and I think OR TV, that's more of the design, it's like students trying to learn what local government works like and they're, so that's, that's their issue.
Megan?
My concern comes not that, I understand exactly what you're saying. We as individual board members have no authority to speak on, to really, you can only, when you're speaking on OR TV, you really can't, you're representing yourself unless the board specifically voted to give you that authority to present, like I saw there were some PowerPoints and things on that OR TV. You know, we didn't create that and vote on that as a board. And in the past, when we even did press releases, we had to vote on it as a board before it was released because it was as the board. So, I just want to make sure we're very careful and that we make sure anything that is representing the board has been charged and approved by the board at a board meeting. I think that is imperative, that's all.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
I mean, my question is, would you want then us to bring all the information before you, before it's aired? Is that what you're asking?
Which is really kind of difficult.
It's real, I mean, they're working on a two-week schedule, but I can...
I don't think, I think, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what you're going to do, so I don't know what I'd ask. But I think if it's something that is, at least, I think we should be presented with, you know, if there was a request for the, you know, then we should know what it is and say, okay, great, do it. Or if you think there's a need for something, then you could raise it to us and we say, go ahead and, I mean, I don't think we need to be like really tight about it, but...
I mean, I think it's reasonable that I could tell you, because it seems perfectly reasonable to me that I'll know in advance because they're working on a two-week schedule. I mean, I can tell you right now exactly what their thoughts are, what they want to do for that segment. I don't have the actual, you know, bullets and all that that come on because the students are actually doing all that stuff after I do it, but I mean, so that's...
Well, that's what they write, not you.
Right. I mean, I can only, I mean, I can tell you what the specifics of the segment are.
Right.
And I, that's easy for me to do before each board, as long as we kind of fall along their line, but yeah.
I would think just keeping it in past tense, last week we discussed, instead of saying we're going to.
Or the budget process is, you know, that's part of statute.
Or we're meeting next week, but I wouldn't go with the, the board is going to do whatever.
And no commentaries.
No, there's no commentaries.
But Al, you do, may I speak?
Yes.
You do have the right to, to express your own opinion.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if I slash off board, no board, I can say anything.
You know, say, just say, look, this is my opinion, you know, I think that, I think that people would like that. I think people would like to sometimes hear individual opinion.
It's not really designed in that way, though.
Yeah, well, I don't, I'm just saying in broad sense, in general.
It's supposed to be like a basic informational...
It's supposed to be like a basic informational show. It's not supposed to be.
Are we ready for the amendment?
Nope, Ian.
No, Ian.
That's a concern of mine, that if you're Al Howland on as Al Howland, you're on as Al Howland, but if these children think that you're Al Howland's school board member, then it's misperception and it's misrepresentation because you're not. So that's, it's problematic because the, your choice to go on the station while noble and generous of your time is not legal in the sense of, did the board give you a charge to do so? And was it approved?
Well, I mean, the initial one was just them introducing me as a board member. I wasn't speaking, I mean, they were just asking me, you know, I wasn't speaking for the board at all, it was just an interview. So technically that would be, I wasn't speaking for the board, I was just an individual speaking, so that would make it legal. But it's, the intent really is just, again, I think it's, we're moving deeper than what the intent really is. The intent is like an informational thing of what's going on in the schools, and that's just like, no different than anything that was read off of any of the things that are going out in our flyers. And then, again, the students are interested also in the workings of local government. And so they're, with that, they're asking like, how does this work? So it's not, it's not really an opinion type thing, it's more of a nuts and bolts of the basic of how the board functions.
And by approving this, you are allowing them to do this.
I think you must be an extraordinary human being. You've been on the board how many weeks and you already know the whole process?
I don't, it's like...
I'm impressed, but I think you need to be careful. All, Megan, Krista and I all had the best of intents and we ended up in court twice. So intense, intense are great, but we have an obligation here and I think we need to be careful with it.
And?
Well, you know, we sort of got onto this before, but if, you know, as part of our board meeting is, you know, talking about committees, so you, as part of what you say for your committee, you could always be two weeks ahead of time or one week ahead of time and say, I'm planning to, this is what I'm planning to say on OR TV next week and I'd like the board to give me permission to kind of do this, and then we would say, okay, and then go ahead, and that would be simple enough, you know?
Yep, that's exactly what I was thinking.
I think you're writing that, Chair.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment? All those in favor? The amendment passes, back to the main motion. Are we ready? All those in favor? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion carries.
Maria?
Yes.
I just, I do want to let Al know, I did watch, I thought you did a nice job.
It's not really, I mean, again, I think...
You have a good demeanor for that.
The intent really is, it's like supposed to be, I think, from my perspective, the biggest thing is, is that it's working with the students. It's like, it's connecting the board directly to kids. And, you know, I mean, the thing, it keeps coming back to me, but it's not just me, it's like all of the board members coming in here and seeing the students work, and it's a good way to bring us into the school, and anytime we can do that, I'm always a big advocate of that, so.
It was a lot of fun to watch that one. It was good.
One take, one take.
Oh.
And now go to, which of course I can't make this computer show me, the goals.
Policy goals.
Yeah.
John?
Maria, too.
Thank you. And this is from the policy committee, and we're very ambitious, and we're planning to work extremely hard to review the entire policy manual in accordance with statute and recommended format by the NHSBA this year. And after that, to establish a three-year cycle to review them. And we're planning to discuss, deliberate and create policy as a result of changes in the law. And that's moved by?
Me.
Krista.
Second.
Seconded by Megan. Discussion.
Good luck.
Yes.
Hi, welcome OR TV to come and visit at their policy.
They'll fall asleep.
Maybe they could make it fun, I mean, they did a lot of creative things, so.
I think they put it to a music monitor.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion passes. District reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, we have to do that emergency?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Sorry.
You're right.
You're right, sorry. We have an emergency appointment. Mr. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I'm going to ask Todd. Todd, would you come up and just explain the process you went through in terms of selection and the nominee?
Mike Troy, the shop teacher I spoke about at last meeting, was contracted to be our, what they call, stage manager for the fall play. Basically what that is, is build the sets for the fall production. Clearly he's not able to do that, so we needed to find somebody else who was ready, willing and able to step in with the play going up in November. Fortunately, Scott Capel, a gentleman who's volunteered quite a bit of his time with a lot of our productions, is available. He has some set building experience and he is willing to take that duty on, on the spur of the moment to make it happen for the November... John, do you know when the date of the show is? I think it's November, I don't want to say because I'll be wrong, it's in November. So we have a short time to, so anyway, that's why the emergency nature of it, because they literally need to build the sets like, before the next board meeting.
So I would nominate Scott Capel?
Scott Capel.
Capel.
And you should have him...
As a stage manager.
I know, we have.
Oh, you do have him, okay.
I make a motion to approve Scott Capel as the fall stage manager for the drama department at a stipend of $1,467.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Megan. And where does that stipend come from?
It's a budgeted item in the annual budget.
Okay, then there's money left?
Yes, ma'am.
The stipend that would apply to Mike, how about...
Oh, okay, thank you. Discussion?
John?
I went to see the upside of being down at the Players' Ring in Portsmouth last weekend, and it was fabulous, and I had the chance to meet Mr. Capel after the show, and I had a chance to talk with him, and he seems like a really genuine man. I think he's going to do a great job.
Okay.
My understanding is Scott has worked with his mom, his Meredith's mom is, wife, thank you, I know there's also a son, there's a son as well. He's, he has been on the stage in our, in our school for countless productions volunteering his time, so I'm grateful that he can do this for us and I'm very pleased to finally pay him for something. I would hope that as we move through into maybe even next year, Superintendent Morse, you can give us a breakdown on stipends, extracurricular stipends, stipends for athletics. I'd like to have a grasp of how much we spend for kids who are in athletics versus kids who are doing extracurricular activities, because I'm concerned that that's a very tilted scale.
It is.
And I don't know that we're serving all of our children as well as we could. I know that we've funded robotics this last year, but there may be other programs that could use an adult supervisor to get them off the ground, so just for future discussions, this provided an opportunity for me to...
We do that right during the budget process.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to make a correction, I actually met Alden Cable. So if father's anything like son, he'll do a great job.
Nice job, John.
Very much so.
Are the stipends budgeted part of the contract?
Yes, it's part of the master contract.
Are we ready for a vote? Did we do that?
We're ready.
We are? All those in favor? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative, motion carries. Now, district reports.
Great, I'm going to share one district report with Al. We've been working pretty hard this September to find spots in the schedule to have the community forums, so these community forums have been scheduled for October. The concept is to try to get to the community forums before we get deep into the budget so we can have conversations with the communities that don't revolve around budget, though we all know everything revolves around budget. So we'd like to be able to at least have a couple of items out there to discuss common core, enrollment, and tuition is kind of the primers of the pump in the conversation, but the more meaningful part, I believe, will be the question and answer section. So Al, do you want to put the dates out?
So we have three forums scheduled. The first is October 10th at Moheramit from seven to eight. The second is at Oyster River Middle School, which is October 16th from 7:30 to 8:30. And the third, am I going too fast there?
What's the time at the middle school? Seven thirty.
Seven thirty to eight thirty at the middle school.
Yeah.
October what?
Sixteen.
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 Okay.
And the third one is October 24th at Mast Way from seven to eight.
I would add to this that Carolyn Eastman, the assistant superintendent, has worked very hard with me to try to find these dates. One of the things that we discovered as we were trying to lock in dates is, we will conflict with something in the district every time. And so it's a matter of trying to pick a date that has the least amount of conflict as opposed to finding a date that has no conflict. So I wanted to thank Carolyn. And the PTOs at all three schools are acting as hosts, if you will, and these are not intended to be school-only conversations, so these conversations, we hope will draw in not just parents of our students, but also community members, town leaders and so forth, so.
How are we inviting, how are we inviting the public?
We'll start inviting the public as starting tomorrow, because we needed to get these dates out in front of you first.
With emails?
Yep, we'll send them to town leaders, so the select people in the council, and we will send it to the town manager here in Durham, and the PTOs are taking on the responsibility to stripping information through their information networks. Uh-oh.
The 24th is a budget meeting.
Okay, so there you go. That was the first, somehow that got by us. So Mast Way is, 10th and 16th work, we'll figure out the third one.
Maybe Monday.
Just a question, knowing this community, is it hour enough for presentation and questions?
Carolyn, yeah, Carolyn and I had that conversation, and I think the hour is probably the pump primer, I expect that they'll last longer and we'll stay as long as it takes.
You can borrow the gallon.
Yep.
Krista?
Are the PTOs offering babysitting services at the two community forums for the elementary schools?
Carolyn.
Yes, at Moheramit and yes? Yes, at Mast Way.
Okay.
And it's the PTOs that are providing it?
Yes.
It's members, members of the PTO?
Four is providing Moheramit.
Four. Do we know who the adults are that will be present?
Adults meaning?
Who's providing the childcare?
Oh.
If they're not staff and they haven't had checks of their...
They're not employees, not an employee event, so you don't have to go through the whole fingerprinting, you know, PTOs don't do that.
Thank you to those.
Two dates, third one to come. Thanks, Sue.
That's good, two out of three.
New market capacity study.
Sure, so in terms of new market, again, these conversations are just beginning. I am already beginning to get feedback on whether people think it's a good idea or not a good idea, but we haven't even had our first initial conversation with the new market representatives, that's on October 22nd. And so I don't want the public out there to think that this body or I have made any decisions in relation to tuition students. This is a much bigger conversation than just a superintendent, the superintendent conversation, and it's, I think it's a bigger conversation than school board to school board conversation. So there'll be plenty of opportunities between now and whenever a decision is being made. And I would just want to emphasize that no decisions have been made. This is merely a conversation between the superintendents at this point, but with permission of both boards. And then going on to future search, the next board meeting, Mary Jane McCollum, the consultant that does this work, will be here, and that will be our discussion item, so you'll have an opportunity to meet her and ask her questions in terms of approach and all of that. So that, I just want to make sure the board knows that's coming up on the 17th. And then my final presentation is really about what happened yesterday, because obviously the communities couldn't be there. It was an open session, but it's a work day, and to have any expectation other than that the board and the ABC committee and administration could make a meeting that is eight hours long is probably unreasonable. I think it was probably a little bit for the ABC committee and the board at the end of the day, I know those chairs were incredibly uncomfortable, but in some ways, maybe represented the conversation we were having, hard conversation. We are at the very beginning stages of developing an FY14 budget, and I again want to emphasize that this is a long process. You, as a body, you actually established it as a much longer process than I'm used to, starting about six weeks earlier than I would in previous jobs. And I think part of that is your attempt to make sure, as the person at the podium during public session indicated, to provide opportunities for those conversations, to get feedback, to have meaningful discussions about issues as we go forward in time. So yesterday's document represented nearly $2 million worth of growth in our budget. Having said that, I want to make sure that everybody understands that's not the recommended budget, it's not close to the recommended budget. We have so much work, we have three months' worth of work to get to the place where we would have a recommended budget, and that recommended budget comes from you, not from administration. So what you got yesterday was a very comprehensive and detailed budget, line-by-line budget, and an overview through PowerPoint of every cost manager, principals, transportation directors and so forth. And I cannot emphasize enough that that is the very first blush with many, many meetings coming up, and as Sue alluded to earlier, the next one is going to be on the 24th, and we'll be talking about special ed and the SIU divisions. So as we go forward in time, we'll have more information. For example, yesterday, very critical component of the budget development process, we had no meaningful information around revenue. So people, how can you put a budget together without revenue? You can't. And the state of New Hampshire is about six weeks behind where we are right now, and until Sue gets some meaningful information from the state of New Hampshire as to what they're going to establish as the threshold for funding in the state of New Hampshire, we're kind of what I call building a budget in the dark. You know, we can have lots of ideas and they can all be great ideas, or maybe some of them won't be great ideas, but until we have the revenue piece built, it's sort of like building a budget with only half the knowledge that you need before you could get to something that's meaningful to the community. So yesterday was literally the second blush at this, the first blush was at a board meeting two weeks ago, but I really want to make sure that no one in the three towns, no one, staff or citizens, feel like yesterday's presentation was anything other than the first step in a very long process. Questions?
I think, speaking for myself only, I'm numb from yesterday, so. I don't know that I can even think of questions, but I will.
I'm sure, I have lots of work to do from yesterday based on the questions that were asked, so ABC and the school board were very much involved.
I have a question about questions. I didn't get to ask all my questions yesterday. How shall I, should I just forward them to Maria and yourself?
Yeah, you can do that, and then, don't forget that as the school board, you get, as I said to you yesterday, we get many bites at the apple. So we have the 24th coming up, you can either be like, I want to get those questions on about special ed and the SIU for the 24th, or you can give me whatever running questions you have and I'll make sure I assign them to the presentations of that evening. So as we go forward in time, I'll start making recommendations, but I'm not at any, at this point, making any recommendations because we still need a lot more information.
Okay. I did want to commend Jim, you and your team for really very well-prepared presentations yesterday. I think, you know, I've only, this is only my second time going through this, and I was very impressed. Everyone was very informative and very helpful. I think the document that we were given was easy to follow, and I, you know, looking back in years past, I mean, I couldn't, it was almost impossible to even read our budgets, so I see a huge... So I see a huge mark of improvement in that respect. I just want to, I'm looking for some guidance, I guess, from you and Maria about what is the next step. You know, the board had requested to look at a flat budget. We recognize, obviously, at least I personally feel like this new $500,000 hit from the state was something we didn't know about, and, you know, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but, you know, obviously, we have to incur that cost in our budget. So I'm asking, do we need to make, to be able to see what a budget would look like, a flat budget, maybe with the extra $500,000 built in? Do we need to make a formal motion to have that view? And at what point in time is it appropriate?
Sure. I would ask the board not to take such an action, to let Sue Caswell and I and the administrative team get to the place where we've made recommendations, and it may or may not meet your desired goal. And then if we've made recommendations and you've approved, and next week I'm meeting with ABC to give them a way of approaching, you know, they put, they asked us to put $650,000 of capital improvement into the budget as a number, as a placeholder. And so I asked Ann Knight if I could present an alternative way of getting to the capital improvements that would dedicate far less money to the budget, but over time, much like I did yesterday with the technology. And they're open to that presentation. Sue said today that they would like me to come and do that presentation for them, and I will. Hopefully, that's maybe the first step. I could come out of that meeting with their support, so I can say, you know, my recommendation for capital improvement is X, and this is how we're going to achieve that work. And you'll start seeing the budget go down in ways that the system can absorb without going into apoplexy. You know, it's just, can we do it in a thoughtful, thoughtful way? And at some point, I'll have exhausted all the tools to my chest, and then you'll say, it's okay, or it's not okay, we want to see X number more, and what that means. And then the administrative team and I will sit there and carry to the next step. So I see it as a two-stage process, where the administrative team works through lowering the budget with the principal goal in mind of not impacting the quality of education we provide. And then when I get to the point where I feel like I can't go any further, then that's when I would say to you, this is as far as I can get to this point. How much further do you want me to go? And I'll need that guidance from you, and then I can give you the next level. Rather, if we do it this early, then it becomes sort of an exercise in frustration for a lot of people.
I can't help but think of the letter from Lee and the conversations I've had with folks in my community and representatives of Madbury, and what their expectations are, which are a budget that shows no increase. The 500,000 is another story. So I need to support that. I'm not saying to you now what a number is, I'm just saying that that's where I'm hoping we're going, because that's, those are the folks I have to honor.
Yep.
Megan?
May I say one more thing? I just, I just want to be very clear that last year, it was my first experience with the budget, and I wanted to have these conversations that we're having right now. And they didn't happen, for various reasons. And that I have, as a board member, I will, I am not, I just, I want to be sure that we're doing exactly what we, giving you as much time. I did not want to wait till December, but that was when I was finally given the green light. And I just want to be clear on that. I don't think people fully recognize that.
Sure. I'll be making recommendations as we go through the budget season to, because I'll need your support. So if we come to a different conclusion next week with the ABC, then you'll expect that recommendation the next time we talk about budget. So it's not going to be, I'm not going to wait till I have a whole pile of stuff. As we make decisions and as we're comfortable making recommendations, we're going to present them to you. And of course, one of the big ones out there is how many staff will bite on the retirement incentive. So that's, that's another piece. The funding in November 15th, Sue, is that what we said? The funding comes from New Hampshire, November 15th, that'll be another milestone. And so I think it's really critically important that we have a process that is deliberative, where you have a chance to react to items as I'm reacting to them, as I'm presenting to them, so that we don't get to December and we think, oh, my goodness, we've got this huge hole.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a business administrator.
Business administrator.
Susan Caswell.
FY13.
In your packet, you have the status of the current budget. It's, well, October, so this is three months into the fiscal year, one month into the school year. Last month, I believe, when I gave you a report, there were no encumbered salaries. This report reflects all of the obligations we have for salaries and benefits at this time.
So in business manager speak, you're cautiously saying that we are okay in the first quarter.
We are okay at this point in time, but I will say that there isn't a lot of wiggle room. I mean, at this point, I've encumbered everything from, in my mind, because it's only October. We still have a heating season to go through, a lot of school year to go through, so I don't expect a large fund balance at the end of the year. But as we move through the year, I'll be able to predict that more accurately. But most of the fund balance right now is in, as you can see, in the salaries and benefits lines. So, and there isn't a lot. And I think I put in my note here, even though you see the $486,000, that doesn't include substitutes and those things that aren't encumbered, so there isn't a lot of money there, so.
So what does encumbering mean?
Encumbering means that every contract that we have out there that we're obligated to pay is already there. It's there and accounted for, so. So anything that's left is what's left, pretty much.
I have a question, not so much about this, but about our audit. And when, when does that?
Audit is complete.
Right.
We're waiting for the draft.
Okay.
And as I indicated, you'll, the state report that we're generating is based on those numbers, so you'll see that when we get the confirmation of that.
In the past, we've, the auditors have come, well, representative has come to the board, and do we, should we expect that?
If you'd like, I can make arrangements for that. Once the report's complete, I think it was Frank that's come to the meeting and just given you an overview, and you can ask questions and, sure.
Okay.
You expecting a glowing report like last year? Didn't hear a whole lot when they were here, but, you know, I mean, yes.
Yes.
Yes, of course.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Student Senate report.
I'll make this one short and sweet. The Senate's currently working on figuring out what we're going to be doing over the course of the rest of the year, and when we do, I will let all of you know.
Sounds great.
John, have you and Todd started working on the election process?
We spoke about it.
That's a start.
We did speak about it. We are going to, did we?
We were going to pick a day to get the...
We were going to speak. Yeah. Yeah, we mentioned picking a day, and then we got sidetracked.
Okay.
Thank you. Other? Turnip announcements and commendations from the district.
Nothing from my table, but...
Oh, Jay's going first this time.
Good evening, Jay Richard, the principal of the middle school. Just a couple of quick notes. We have our first 10-year-old middle school bike workshop. School resource officer Holly Malaski's done a lot of work behind the scenes to pull this off. What we're essentially doing, we've changed it from tomorrow till Friday just because of the weather, but our students, our fifth grade students are going to get an experience on bike safety, how to change a flat tire. We've got a variety of volunteers coming in on Friday, so it should be a great time. I also want to thank two parents in the community, Kathy Leach and Jackie Spinney. This is a portion of our Safe Route to School grant. We've been working with Durham, Durham, the town of Durham, Police Department, Public Works, et cetera, to bring some resources into the community to try to make a safer trip for students to walk and bike to school. They also, this is long overdue, former student Devin Schroeder, he was in eighth grade last year. He was recently recognized for a Baron Prize. Only 10 students were selected throughout the country, and he also got a significant financial reward for that. His work essentially was on Take Back the Tap campaign. You might notice even here in the high school, we have a water font where you can actually fill up a water bottle instead of using plastic water bottles. So he's done a lot of work in the community, and congratulations to him. The kneecap ninjas are alive and well at the middle school. That's something our fifth graders, fifth grade teachers have started, just encouraging our students to give their best efforts on the kneecaps. Over the next several days, we'll be taking the kneecaps. So I want to thank parents in advance for encouraging their children to get a good night's sleep and give their best efforts on these assessments. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The NPR was, it's on our BYOD, Bring Your Own Device to School. Some schools have started to look at what our policies are for allowing students to bring their own electronic devices to school for learning purposes. And we had three teachers that, you know, were interviewed. Some, Sedana D. Montgomery and Janet Martelli haven't heard the piece yet. I look forward to hearing that, maybe later on tonight, but those three staff did a great job with that, so I look forward to hearing that piece. Thank you.
Thanks.
I am speaking on behalf of Carrie from Mast Way tonight. She couldn't be here, so she asked that I speak on her behalf at Mast Way. She mentioned that third and fourth graders began kneecap testing. She was thanking parents for their support during kneecap, also mentioning that it's been interesting for her to view the differences between testing regs in New Hampshire and Massachusetts. First graders at Mast Way will be hosting their first fairy house celebration this Thursday, 4:30 to 6:00 PM. Students created fairy houses that will be on display in the courtyard, and there'll be an author, Tracy Kane, will be there selling and signing books. And after-school enrichment programs began this week, and there are three programs running for our students, including kids yoga, recycled and nature-loving art, and simple science. And a special thanks to Deb Byrne for organizing these activities for students. And to teachers Christie Chase and Molly Schlangen, did I say that right, Schlangen? For offering to instruct our students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Todd Allen from the high school. Kneecaps at the high school are starting tomorrow and Friday, and then the following Thursday and Friday. I have set out the schedule, it's on our website, but it does involve a delayed start for freshmen, sophomores, and seniors to allow the juniors to take the test. So that, that's coming up. And I also want to put in a plug for our first PTO meeting, which is October 15th. We've had, our, the current chair of the PTO is Marjorie Wolfson. She has done a fabulous job, but she's definitely ready to hand over the reins to other enthusiastic parents. I would encourage and welcome as many parents to come to that initial meeting to kind of get organized and get some, some, some new blood. Be great to have. But anyway, I look forward to seeing you there. Thanks.
Thank you. Nobody else? Board announcements, commendations? Krista?
I'd like to make a lengthy commendation, because it's already been mentioned once. However, I think it's important for people to realize how many people made up our day yesterday in presenting us with the initial budget. So I'd like to commend Superintendent Moore, Sue Caswell, Catherine Lord, Carolyn Eastman, Amy Witcher, Ray Salentano, Todd Allen, Jay Richard, Dennis Harrington, Lisa Huppie, Josh Olstead, Carrie Vage, Dorstner Mers, Brian Cherry, Rob McEwen, Marjorie Smith, David Taylor, Wayne Burton, and Ann Knight for attending our meeting yesterday and presenting us with wonderful information. And also, a big commendation to Wendy De Frusho, because I know that she probably put in most of the work in providing the presentation for us. And then my second commendation is to the students of Mast Way, MoHerramitt, the middle school, and an advanced commendation to the high school, who will be taking the kneecap test. I know that they're all trying their very hardest to represent our school within the test, and I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, could I just follow up? I, I, thank you very much for that, it was very generous. And I also want to point out that the office staff, even the hourly people, stayed late to put those books together. We all jumped in, we all took a piece of it. It was really very impressive. And so the central office staff did a marvelous job. Wendy certainly was the lead, but everybody chipped in in the end, and we made sure we had those documents ready for you.
Thank you.
Just add, because Dennis isn't here, I wanted to put a plug in for the pumpkins from MoHerramitt, which were great, and the quinoa salad that was presented was amazing to think that that was something that the cafeteria produced.
Anything else from the board? Then we have discussion items, and we have committee assignments.
Yes, Madam Chair, I asked you to add that to the agenda today, because in reviewing our committee assignments, our past practice in the district for each committee is to have three board members. And we have three on operations, we have three on policy, and we don't have three on communications. I have been on the board for two years, I can speak from my own experience why having three members is important. Some of that has to do with barring illness. We still have representation at the meeting, and it, it gives a broader breadth of views from the community, the more the merrier. So I bring it before you to request that you add an additional member to the communications committee, to share the work, which sounds like it's increasing. And that's my request.
The...
I'm not volunteering, because I, the reason why there's not three members on the communications committee is because I stepped down off the communications committee. So that'd be why there's only two people left. So I'm not volunteering, to be real.
But it was fun.
Yeah, it is, it's a blast, and a lot of work.
What does the rest of the board feel about this? That we should have three?
I'm fine.
You're fine with two?
I'm fine with three. I don't think, I'm sorry, I don't want to be under... But I'm fine if somebody else wants to...
Well, Ann, would you like to volunteer for this?
Yes, I'll volunteer to be on communication.
Then I will nominate Ann Lane, and if the board agrees.
Yeah.
Do we have a show of hands, please? Everybody agrees?
Thanks for nominating me.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any, no other discussion? Yes?
I just want to ask, actually, a question for Jim. In our discussions during the budget meeting, there was some discussion about a technology advisory committee. And I assume that would be from your administration?
Administration, yes. Josh is in the process of developing, putting together a technology advisory committee.
Okay.
Will that be a board member?
Can be if you want. It's an administrative advisory committee, but there's no reason why a board member couldn't sit on that committee. Some people are interested.
No, I don't want to be on it, but I'm just, I just have a comment about it. After speaking with Josh yesterday, he was unaware that there was a prior technology committee, well, he, he was aware that it existed, but he didn't know who was on it.
Right.
So, yeah, my God, who was standing next to me? Someone was standing next to me and said that they, I, we asked them to forward the list. It was, oh, Rob McEwen, maybe, I don't know. Somebody that was on the technology committee previously as a community member is going to forward the list to Josh, so that he could understand who was on the original technology committee. And I apologize for not remembering who was standing next to me.
Ann.
I know that amongst us, we have a very capable individual who would be an incredible asset to the technology committee, if she's willing to sit on a committee. And that would be Megan Turnbull. So I'd like to nominate Megan in the event that that opportunity arises.
Thank you, Ann, you can't nominate me, because it's Jim's office committee.
I would just make a recommendation, I'd make a recommendation that Megan Turnbull...
How about this, if there's any board member who's interested in sitting on this committee, they can let me know, and then if I have multiple applicants, I'll present it to the board.
Thank you.
Just a question about committees. Was the replacement for the long-range planning committee, there's an opening, we still have that opening?
Yes.
We still have the opening, and I haven't received any applications.
Does that, I mean, I know it's, is it absolutely have to be from Lee? I mean, if we have, I mean, is that a rule, or is that a guideline, or is that...
Any representation on the committee committee currently?
No, he resigned. And I called the person that was recommended.
Tom, I'd have to look at the bylaws to see what it says about representation. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can check.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. School board committee update. The policy committee keeps meeting and keeps working, and as I say, we are very optimistic that we can do this. Any other committees?
Actually, you know, if I can answer the ORTV conundrum, I hate to spill the beans, but actually, their next plan is to go down to Young's tomorrow, and the students are going to do their man-on-the-street thing. So the focus really of that is just, how does the budget process work, the overall thing? And that also that it's not just seven people here that decide everything, that there is actually chances for the community to have input. So they're going to set up microphones, and they're going to ask community members a couple of questions about, do they know if they can be involved? And then my little segment of it is actually sitting down and going over the steps from setting up our goals to going through all these departmental adjustments, to finally moving to where we vote on the budget, and then the public meeting and the deliberative session and the final vote, just the broad overview of what we're going to do. So it'll be filming tomorrow. I think my sub means about 12:30, so if anyone wants to see Students in Action, you can see it. And I'm not quite sure of when, it takes them about two weeks to do all the editing and everything else and get it on television, so that's the next segment.
Any objections to this? Okay. Board approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of 9:19:12.
Moved by Krista, seconded by Ed. Any corrections, deletions? Hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, John in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Denise Day Durham, just regarding the selectmen having, you know, input into the budget. In the cooperative school district, we vote on the budget as individuals, and no board has, you know, any more say over, it's not, it doesn't go by the towns, it goes by the individuals in this district. And I just want to say, while it's important for them to be able, you know, to speak, as any of us can speak, they cannot decide, you know, oh, this is what it should be. Individuals, you have the voice. You know, we vote on that final budget. So I just think it's really important not to just give more credence to what they're saying compared to what anybody else says. You know, I'm a member, I live in this district, and I vote, and my vote is as important as anybody else's, I guess, is what I'm saying. So just to keep that in mind. And yes, certainly, I'm well aware that there are many individuals in this town that certainly want to see, as, as has been stated, a flat budget, but I also believe that there are many, many, many individuals that also support keeping that standard that we have in our district and supporting what, you know, the schools, and, and we place a lot of value on that in our, in our district. So just to keep that in mind as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Agenda planning. Future items. Okay. And the future date is 10/17 and 10/24. And we added a special meeting on the 10th.
We're going to have a special meeting on the 10th at 6:45 to 7 o'clock for the board to be able to sign the budget document.
Do you have a motion for the non-public session?
Yes, you need a motion to go in.
I know, but according to what?
RSA 91-A32C, right there.
Okay.
In accordance with.
We are now going into a non-public session, according to RSA 91-a colon 32c for a student issue.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yes, you need a motion.
Is it a roll call vote, or is it?
You can do it, you can do it acclamation, you can do it roll call. Doesn't make any difference.
So do I have a motion?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Motion to enter, oh, wait, hold on. Freeze for one second. Motion to enter non-public session RSA 91-a colon 3, Roman numeral 2, parentheses C for student issue.
Seconded by Ed. Discussion, hearing none. Could we have a show of hands, please?
The superintendent said it has to be a roll call.
It has to be a roll call. Yeah.
It has to be a roll call. Ann Lane?
Ann Lane, aye.
Krista Bets, aye.
Al Holland, aye.
Tom Newkirk, aye.
Ed Charlie, aye.
Megan Turnbull, aye.
Maria Barth, aye. And you don't have the vote.
Yeah, we can stay right here. Thank you, everyone.